It's ten o'clock and it's time for the councilman session. We have Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Savarnich, Mr. Wax, Mr. Goldberg. We have five members. We need five more for a corner. Okay, the council will please come to order. Call the roll.
Berdsonchek, Juric Galanter, Goldberg Hernandez, Holden, Miss Kowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Orange Wax, Walters, Foro, ten members present in a corner. Mr. President.
Thank you. This is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the sixteenth day of June, the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on channel thirty-five. We're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Savarnich moves. Mr. Pacheco second. There's no objections. Unanimous vote. The next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections unanimous vote. We do have some presentations today, and I'm going to call on Mr. Pacheco first.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues. I have three presentations to do in regards to one of our very well-established and highly revered high schools in my district. I want to start off with one of them, but specifically, today we're here to commemorate Roosevelt High School and some of their achievements from the last year. So the first group I want to present to you is the Roosevelt Dance Team, which has the dance instructor of Joey Chui, who for the last nine years has taken first place in the dance team competition for the city of Los Angeles. And for nineteen ninety-nine and the year 2000, they are the city champs in the dance team category. And let me bring them up. Let me bring up Natasha Guevara, who's the captain, Jenny Monroe, Diana Corona, Eileen Preciado, Norma Pesada, Serena Estrada, Isabel Bracamontes, Rebecca Delgado, Connie Huerta, Maria Hernandez, Yvette Minjares. And so I asked them to have one or two people be spokesperson, that they choose someone among yourselves to give a little bit. Natasha, are you gonna... okay.
Tell us what you went through to get there. Just tell us what the competition's like.
Well, for the competition, it's pretty hard, but at the end it is rewarding. And on behalf of the dance team, we'd like to thank you for this award. But it's pretty hard for us, but it does pay off. That's pretty much what I have to say.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Well, as a first-year member, it's like a great experience because we work hard for all we did, and it's nice to feel that our work was paid off as a team, and it's a great feeling, and we're just anxious for next year.
As many of you know and as you watch these competitions, as you channel surf like I do on my TV, this takes a lot of coordination, a lot of teamwork, and obviously to be city champs must mean that they were disciplined enough to follow each other and also work in conjunction. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles in my district, each one of you is receiving a congratulations presented to you today, June sixteen, two thousand, to the nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand Roosevelt High School Dance Team City Champions. Once again, congratulations. Also, from Roosevelt, we have the nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand city champs in soccer. There's a second year that they have won the championship. Am I right, guys? No? No, the first year. Okay, first time. All right. Second time in twenty-four years. Okay. So let me bring up Jonathan Baños, Aldo Barrios, Liborio Cortés, Sandra Hernandez, Hector Orellana, Andy Perez, Hector Perez, José Pina, Hector Islas, Paulo Jiménez, Aaron Martínez, Alexander Rios, Omar Romo, Juan Rosales, Nibardo Martínez, Roberto Medina, José Mejía, Roberto Mendoza, Jaime Ruiz, Salvador Sánchez, Arnaldo Solerzano, and their head coach is Charles McKay, with the assistant coach of Antonio Zamora, the athletic director at Roosevelt High School is Bernard Terry, the assistant athletic director is David Endow, and the athletic assistant is Juan Guzmán. And let me see who's gonna give a little, two sentences from this group, the soccer team. Where's Hector? Where's Hector? Okay, Hector, come on. Give us a few words as to what it means to be the city champ, as the MVP.
Okay. First of all, I feel proud for being here, for have the privilege of being invited. And we are all happy for winning the championship, and I hope next year we'll have a better season. Thanks for all of you. And that's it.
You guys are great.
Thank you. Take this off and take that off.
Hi, my name is Aaron. I'm here with the boys' soccer team from Roosevelt, and we really thank everybody for having this for us. It's like an honor for us to have this. And we hope to repeat next year and be at Eastlake College again for the city championship. I just want to thank everybody for having this for us.
To the whole soccer team, I want to first of all present, and you all have received your certificates, of congratulations this day, June sixteen, two thousand, to the Roosevelt High School Soccer Team City Champions. Once again, congratulations.
All right, we're not done yet, but this is our next Roosevelt High School recognition is to the Eastern League Champions, the nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand varsity baseball team. This is the second year that they are Eastern League Champions, and they had the distinct honor of this year sharing the title of having the most wins in Southern California with twenty-eight wins, which they shared with West Torrance High. I want to bring up Raúl Ramírez, Lane Barajas, Lucio Boteo, Juan García, Chris Namura, Tony González, Julian Torres, Ernie García, Ruben Brito, Philip Valdez, Fabián Rodríguez, Brian Pearson, Demetrio González, Danny Lezo, Jerome Iboa, Francisco Figueroa, Sergio Vargas, Jorge Stopani, Cristian González, Valente Madrid, Danny Perez, Roman González, with the head coach of Scott Pearson, Carlos Montes, Santiago Sánchez, assistant coaches of Carlos Montes, Santiago Sánchez, Ernie Rodríguez, Danny Lemos, Jaime Valle, Josué González, Art Villarde, and Lupe Flores. So if we can have Lane Barajas. Come on up, Lane.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here. Thank you for having us here. It's an honor to be here. This year has been really, it's been a really great year. We've worked hard. We've taken lots of trips. We've played a lot of games. And just thank you on behalf of the baseball team for having us here. Thanks.
Okay, so on the behalf of the city of Los Angeles, my district, I want to present to all the members a congratulations to the Roosevelt High School nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand baseball team, Eastern League Champions, this June sixteen, two thousand. Congratulations, guys. Mr. President, thank you, colleagues, thank you. Obviously, it is an honor for me to present this recognition to one of our pride and joys in the east side, Roosevelt High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Wax, hold on a week. Mr. Wax for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of council, following on the heels of Councilman Pacheco's introduction of many students from Roosevelt High, I have the pleasure of introducing some extraordinary young people from North Hollywood High School. In fact, it's been my honor over the years to bring students to this council to be recognized for their extraordinary academic achievement, which has made North Hollywood High School now not only one of the foremost academic schools in the Los Angeles Unified School District, but has been nationally recognized on a number of occasions for their accomplishments. And once again, the, once again, the Science Bowl team that they put together has brought again further honor to this city. As you know, the Department of Water and Power each year sponsors a Science Bowl in Los Angeles. It's one of the finest activities of the Department of Water and Power sponsors, and once again, the team from North Hollywood High School has won not only the city championship, but they placed fourth in the national in a very, very close competition. In fact, I believe there was a challenged call that perhaps made the difference between winning the national championship and coming in fourth. But coming in fourth in a national championship, which hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of teams participate, and finally narrowing it down to sixty regional contestants, is really an honor that I thought we should once again recognize the young people who made up this year's team. Their coach, Dr. Koikata, their captain, Nina Hahn, Daniel Bersan, and Jackie Wong. And is Tyler here? I believe that Tyler Rubin and Jeff Zara are not here. They're competing in other competitions. Jeff, I think, is in Colorado Springs in the National Chemistry Team event. But it really brings distinction. It brings distinction to the Los Angeles Unified School District. It certainly brings distinction to North Hollywood, to the community, and to the city, and I think makes all of us proud to show what our young people are capable of doing when given the opportunity, and to thank the Department of Water and Power for helping make this opportunity a reality. So, members of council, I want very much if you would join me in recognizing the two thousand North Hollywood High School Science Bowl team, the winners of the Los Angeles competition and fourth nationally, who are here with me today. They deserve our recognition and our applause. Before I introduce their coach and the team members, I'd like Walters Isle from the Department of Water and Power to make a few comments, because they have really been fantastic in sponsoring this.
Thank you, Councilman Wax, and members of the city council. It's a great pleasure for the Department of Water and Power. It's a great pleasure for the Department of Water and Power to be involved with the activity. It's made possible by some 70 volunteers. Three of my colleagues are here joining us in the presentation. One point I wanted to make was, this is the sixth consecutive year that our local schools, high schools have made it to the top four. In fact, we have the best, the record of any state, region, or city. Some of you may recall Venice won the title twice in 90, Councilmember Galanter certainly remembers Venice winning the title twice in 96 and 97, and Van Nuys winning it in 95, and then North Hollywood, the last two years, they placed second as well. So we have six years in a row where the teams have made it to the very top, and we're very proud of our local students with this great accomplishment, and this whole competition is a real joy for us. We also like to present Councilman Wax, and the councilmen that may be interested, we have a Science Bowl mug for you, and our regional T-shirt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, let me present to you Dr. Koikata, who is the coach of the North Hollywood High School Science Bowl team, and ask him to say a few words on behalf of himself and the school and his team.
We'd like to thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to honor us. The students worked very hard. We've worked since the summer, throughout the year. They spent a lot of time preparing for the event, studying the different sciences, physics, chemistry, biology, computer science, math, astronomy, and earth science. And at the national level, they displayed poise and confidence and good sportsmanlike conduct, which would have made, as a coach, proud of the team members. And so, I'd like to thank you. I'd also like to thank the Department of Water and Power. There are many volunteers who has volunteered to be able to help and assist with this event, and also are, at our own school, the teachers and the student body for their support for the Science Bowl team. Thank you.
Thank you, members of council, and I too come bearing gifts, and will go into the press room and be presenting each of the students with their certificate of recognition. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Mr. Savornic, the pride of San Pedro.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, and Mr. President, we are also very proud to continue to have you at the Sports Walk of Fame in downtown San Pedro for those wonderful years of playing football at, uh, what was the name of that university, Mr. President?
Pedro, San Pedro High.
Again, it's Billy Satius, wasn't that it, Mr. President? Mr. President, members of the council, today is indeed a great day in our City of Angels and the community of San Pedro, as we honor an individual as well as a team for their wonderful accomplishments this season. With us here today, we have a champion in track and field as well as the Los Angeles City Champions for girls softball. And so this morning, I would like to honor all of them and tell you a little bit about their accomplishments. May I have the principal, Steve Walters, the athletic director, the coaches, ladies, please join me here at the podium. And as they are making their way forward, I would like to thank all of the family members who escorted them to City Hall today to receive this honor on behalf of we, the members of the city council. First, I would like to mention an exceptional young lady who really shone this year in regards to track and field. With us today is Valerie Flores, who for the season was the Marine League Champion in the 1600 and 3200 meters, and is also a three-time Los Angeles City Champion in the 3200, and a two-time 1600 Champion. She qualified for the state meet in both the 1600 and 3200, and will run, Mr. Wax, I'm sure you will be proud, for UCLA next year. And so, and I think also Mr. Fuer and Ms. Goldberg, I think you'd probably take great pride in that also. And so, today I would like to present on behalf of us, the city council, the certificate of recognition to Valerie for doing an outstanding job in track and field this year, and to honor her as an all-city champion. Valerie, congratulations. Very proud of you. Also, Mr. President, members of the council, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce the San Peter High School Varsity Girls Softball Team, who are the Los Angeles City Champions this year. And let me tell you a little bit of how and what they had to do to get here. It took two days, five hours, and 20 innings for these ladies to win the city championship against Carson just a few weeks ago. They persevered, they did our city and our community proud in bringing home this wonderful championship. We have certificates on behalf of the council for each and every one of them, and for their coaches, and in honoring them, we would like to, again, thank their caregivers, their parents, their grandmas and grandpas, and everybody who visited city council with them today, because these ladies did a wonderful job doing this city and the community of San Pedro, and the entire family of San Peter High School proud. So principal Steve Walters and coach Tony Dobrah, on behalf of the people of the City of Los Angeles and the Los Angeles City Council, we would like to present to you this championship plaque commemorating the Varsity Girls Softball Team's championship for the year 2000, Los Angeles City Champions, continuing the tradition of San Peter High School being champions not only in the academic world, but also in sports. Gentlemen, ladies, congratulations on a very proud city and a very proud community. Mr. President, members, if I could please ask the coach to say a few words, and then the principal, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. On behalf of the team, we'd like to thank the city council, Councilman Savornic, Principal Walters, Mr. Fisher, our AP back at school, Bob Schatz, our athletic director, the girls on the team, the parents. As Rudy said, in San Pedro, when the kids step up and perform very well, the town has always been there to support them in every manner, and this is another example, once again, Councilman Savornic, like myself, being a San Pedro alumni, of taking care of business back at home. Thank you very much.
City council, we'd like to thank you for inviting our wonderful scholars and champions and athletes down for the third time this school year, both in recognition of our championship cross-country soccer, and now softball, plus individual champions. When you call San Peter High School, the phone rings and it says, "San Peter High School, home of scholars and champions." You also invited our top 10 finisher academic decathlon team this year, and thank you for the recognition from the city council, and Rudy Savornic.
Thank you, Mr. President, members, and to give some inspiration to our young ladies here, I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention a former girls softball catcher who had an awesome arm, who used to be able to hit second base from home plate, who grew up to be a city councilwoman. Councilwoman Goldberg used to play softball, and heard she had an awesome arm to throw it to second base, and maybe in a blink of an eye, you ladies will be joining us here.
Rudy, Rudy, there is another catcher there, Stephanie. Her grandfather went to school with me, and I hear he was an interference all the time. He was one of those typical dads that always wanted to interfere and tell them how they should do it. Which is Stephanie? Stephanie, congratulations. Go ahead, Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. President, members.
Miss Goldberg, did you want to make a presentation?
It's a sad thing, I was a great catcher, but I couldn't hit the broadside of a barn, no matter what they threw. Mighty Casey was always striking out. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. I wanted to have, invite up the two groups that we have with us today, the Terminal Island Treatment Plant Low Pressure Gas Holder Refurbishment Group, say that fast three times, from the Department of Public Works Bureau of Sanitation, and also the Working Together in Biosolids Handling at the Terminal Island Treatment Plant Group, also from Sanitation and Engineering. This morning, we have two fine teams for recognition for their work on behalf of the people and the taxpayers and residents of the City of Los Angeles. The first program deals with Terminal Island Treatment Plant, which I'm sure some of you may or may not know, processes and treats 17 million gallons of wastewater each day, each day. Can think about 17 million gallons of wastewater a day. As part of that process, the ever-popular methane gas that we hear so much about is retrieved from the processed waste. The Terminal Island converts this methane gas to electricity, which helps power the treatment plant. The container that holds the gas required expensive refurbishment. This team creatively engineered a way to repair the gas holder with a savings to the city of $78,000, and I'm sure over time, a great deal more. Can we see the tape?
The Terminal Island Treatment Plant processes and treats 17 million gallons of wastewater each day. As part of this process, solids are separated and transferred to the plant's digesters, and the digesters convert these solids into treated biosolids and methane gas. The methane gas is then stored in the low-pressure methane gas holder and is converted into electricity by onsite generators. A portion of the generated electricity is used to power the plant's internal treatment processes, and excess electricity is sold for use elsewhere in the city. Terminal Island's Low Pressure Gas Holder, a massive 24-ton device, showed signs of deterioration and required refurbishment. With repairs by outside contractors estimated to cost more than a quarter of a million dollars, the Terminal Island team explored options for completing this extensive repair themselves. Lifting 24 tons normally requires an extremely large and expensive crane, but staff creatively employed two smaller cranes to lift the massive structure at a greatly reduced rental cost. Once extracted, plant personnel repaired corrosion, replaced the large rails used to level the gas holder, and replaced piping and valves in less time than with an outside contractor. This effort resulted in an early return to normal plant operations with no environmental violations, zero injuries, increased education and teamwork among plant personnel, and savings to the city of $78,000. An outstanding effort. Congratulations.
And that crew is here with us today. So let me introduce Otis Wilder. Where's Otis? All right, Mr. Wilder. Tom Eetman.
Yes.
Alfonso Garland.
Yes.
Keith Gawith. Was that close?
Close, I mean.
Terrence Montgomery.
Not smart.
Hy Sung Kim. Gerald Peppers.
Right here.
Thank you. Dennis Perkins. Did we get everybody? No, I think we missed a couple. Your name is?
My name is DJ, I just joined the team.
He just joined the team, welcome, DJ. And anybody else?
Larry Miller.
Larry Miller, of course. So please give them your thanks and your applause for their efforts on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, and after I do the other groups, we'll take a picture. Oh, they did both? Oh my God, ladies and gentlemen, they did both projects. So we're gonna have them stand here for another second, because they did the biosolids handling at the Terminal Island Treatment Plant, which deals with the biosolids that are transported for fertilizing product. To reduce the trucking costs, water is removed from the biosolids prior to trucking, but the operation caused failures in the device used to load the trucks. So this team, again, redesigned the massive truck loading mechanism, reducing trucking and maintenance costs with the city of an annual savings of about $200,000. So that's like every five years, another million dollars that can be used for things that the city needs in providing goods and services to the residents of the Los Angeles area. So, could we see the second tape?
Wastewater that flows into the Terminal Island Treatment Plant carries solids that are separated from the wastewater prior to treatment. Treated solids are called biosolids, and are transported for use as a fertilizing product to turn marginal land into farmland where livestock feed is grown. Trucking of biosolids is an expensive operation, and with water weighing more than 62 pounds per cubic foot, it is important to remove as much water from the biosolids as possible prior to trucking. De-watered biosolids have the consistency of dirt, and are moved by a system of conveyors to holding tanks called hoppers, used to fill the trucks. As the water content of the biosolids was decreased, the truck-filling hoppers experienced increased failures, requiring expensive and time-consuming repair. Biosolids with less water content cost less to transport, but unfortunately resulted in more frequent failures of the hoppers. Plant personnel partnered with the Bureau of Engineering and determined that a new hopper design was needed. The team reviewed options, determined that off-the-shelf improvements would not solve the problem, and fabricated the needed improvements to these massive hoppers themselves. The team fabricated new large shafts, relocated bearings, redesigned the hopper exit chute, and improved accessibility for regular maintenance. This new design has proven itself for well over a year, and has resulted in a savings of over $200,000 annually in reduced trucking and maintenance costs. An outstanding effort. Congratulations.
Got all that, because there will be a short quiz, and, no, but seriously, these technical issues are very important, and they do make a huge difference to the quality of service that we are able to present to the City of Los Angeles, because when you save a million dollars every five years, as this particular project will do, that's a million dollars that is not additional tax revenue, but tax revenue that can be reprogrammed for other kinds of things and other needs. And so, we congratulate each and every one of you for your part of this team in making this possible. Thank you very much. Picture taken, and then you can...
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Mr. Hernández?
Uh, Mr. President, I do not have a presentation, but I just wanted to announce to everybody that Mr. Eric Carles, who we were gonna try and make a presentation, has become the Dodger all-time home run champion. And based on last night's game and his distance from home, he couldn't be with us today, but he is the Los Angeles Dodgers all-time home run champion. If he would have been here, we'd been recognizing him for that.
Okay, thank you very much. He, he's to be congratulated.
Yes, he does.
Okay, the next, uh, the next, there's, Ms. Sergeant, there's somebody disturbing the council meeting out there in the audience, would you throw him out, please?
Mr. President, before you start the regular agenda, there are several items for continuation. Councilmember Holden has requested item number eight be continued until June 30th. That's item number eight.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number 13, Councilmember Holden has requested that... Item number 13, Councilmember Holden has requested that matter be continued until July 18th. That's item number 13.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number 17, Councilmember Hernandez has requested that matter be continued until Tuesday, June 20th. That's item number 17.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number 10 on the regular agenda is the mayor's appointment of Rene Santiago to the Affordable Housing Commission.
Ms. Santiago, is she here? He? Mr. Santiago? Oh, mister. Oh. Mr. Santiago? Yeah, come over here.
Good morning.
Okay, Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. Santiago is a resident of my district who has been active in the community and has actually served as a planning commissioner at the county level, and we... I have spoken with him about this appointment to Affordable Housing Commission and highly recommend his approval.
Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Santiago, you have been approved.
Thank you very much.
And we want to thank you for serving the city, and we'll send that forthwith.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. President, item number seven, ask that that be continued to Tuesday?
If there's no objections, item seven be continued until Tuesday. No objections, that will be the order. We do have people that wanted to be heard on seven, which a public hearing has already been held, and 13, and those have been continued, so they... They're both continued until Tuesday, so you'll have an opportunity on Tuesday.
And, Mr. President?
Mr.?
With regard to item six, if we could simply bring that back to the Budget and Finance Committee, please.
Refer that to the Budget and Finance?
Please.
Is there any objections to that? Seeing none, that will be the order. Okay, the next item?
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, item number one is a public hearing item.
Is there... Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item number one? It's a proposed street vacation, 66th Avenue... In the... Espalina. Anybody in the audience? We have no cards. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on this? Did you want to be heard? On what? What item? It's not on an item? Well, the comment comes later. Okay. Ms. Galanter moves on this? Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Mr. President, I made an error. If we could please just continue item six to Tuesday, I'd appreciate that, rather than refer to budget. Just continue to Tuesday.
Oh, continue until Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And let that... There's no objections, that will be the order. Next item?
Mr. President, items number two through five and nine are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, any specials by council members? No, two through nine? Okay, hearing none, so prepare the roll on two, three, four, five, and nine. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
Items number 11 and 12 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Is anybody in the audience wants to be heard on 11 and 12? Have no cards, seeing none, the public hearing is closed? Any discussion, 11 and 12? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Next item?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item number 15 is the item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, any... Item 15, Ms. Goldberg, did you? Okay, we'll call that special? 16 also? Okay. All right, 15 and 16 are called special. Next item?
Mr. President, items number 14, 18, and 19 are closed session items, so now it's time for specials. Item number 15. Call special, Councilmember Goldberg.
All right, Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, thank you. My concern on item 15 is really as to whether or not... Is not as to who is... Issuing tickets in the mountain recreation areas of the city, but rather our program of issuing tickets at all. Maybe I could just get someone to answer some questions if I could. As to the Compton-Slosson Park, which is item number one, what are the hours... Where does one get a ticket? What are the postings that you can't do that yield a ticket?
That park is currently under construction at the corner of Compton and Slosson. It's a nature park built by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Right now, there is no funding source for any patrol or law enforcement activity at that park.
So it's just security services? This isn't ticketing?
That's correct. There would be no opportunity for parking tickets being issued at that park. It's simply to provide funding for it.
Okay. On item two... Well, what I'm really trying to find out is, as we expand security services and utilize Mountain Recreation and Conservation Authority personnel to issue parking fines, parking tickets, will the number of parking tickets, is it anticipated the number of parking tickets will increase?
Yes, they have.
They have increased. And approximately how many citations are given on, let's say, a monthly basis?
Approximately 220, 250 citations a month.
250 citations a month. Are they mostly to residents of the City of Los Angeles?
Yes.
Are they residents from the surrounding areas or residents from areas outside the surrounding areas?
It's actually a fair representation of both. The time that we actually find where people reside is when, not in conjunction with the parking tickets, but rather with other citations that we issue for drinking, smoking in a mountain fire district, that's the only time when their address comes to light.
I see. I don't... I really don't have any problem with the enforcement of drinking, smoking, drag racing, and all of that. I do have some problems with parking tickets, though, in mountain areas. When can you not park in these areas?
The... LA City has posted, section along Mulholland and top of Reseda, no stomping towaway after nine o'clock at night, and that... After that time, parking citations are issued.
Is it dark before nine o'clock?
Depending upon the time of year, I would say nine months out of the year, there's at least two hours, two and a half hours, where people can enjoy the city lights prior to the nine o'clock exclusion, and then after that, it is enforced.
My question was, is it dark before nine o'clock?
It's always dark before... Relatively speaking, it's always dark before nine o'clock.
So why... What's the distinction, if it's not darkness, what's the distinction of before nine o'clock and after nine o'clock?
I'm just guessing as far as why the city posted it after nine was that would ensure that whether it be daylight savings time or winter months, that no citations would be issued for people to enjoy the park and the overlooks and the city views during daylight hours.
Actually, I'm asking the wrong person because he didn't make... You don't make that policy. You're giving permission to enforce the policy.
That's correct.
I know this is going to pass, but I will have to say for the record that I am unclear as to why people cannot park and look at the view after nine o'clock at night when they can do it before nine o'clock at night. There are very few places that are free that have panoramic gorgeous views of the city at night, except in places like that where there aren't so many other lights that you can see. And what we're really doing is closing off this area at nine o'clock at night. Now, I don't have any problem with citing for people drinking. I don't have any problem citing for people doing things that aren't supposed to be done in parks, period, but I really have a problem with saying that you can't park there. If we closed it at nighttime every night exactly when it got dark, as some parks do close at night, then you'd say, "All right, maybe it's not safe," but we allow people up there till nine o'clock. I know I'm talking to myself, but I'm going to say it for the record. I object to this, and I'm not going to vote for it. It has nothing to do with who's going to enforce it. Because you're fine to enforce. I have no problem with your enforcement. I have a problem with the policy, and maybe we'll just have to bring some kind of motion in, but, you know, we live in an urban area where a lot of people are in densely populated neighborhoods, and the joy of being able to see this gorgeous city from some vantage place at night for free, in my view, is part of what conserving those mountain open spaces is all about. And if I want to do that at 10:30 at night instead of at nine, I don't understand why my car would be subject to being towed away. And I object to that. So I'm going to vote no on this, but please be assured it has nothing to do with who's going to enforce it. It has to do with the fact that I don't think we should be doing this at all. We should enforce those things which are illegal in any park, but that's all we should be enforcing, and parking is not one of them. So those are my objections, and I will bring in a motion for us to review the policy because I can remember as a young person myself, looking out over that view, and it was, believe me, after nine o'clock at night, and I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Holden?
Who collects the money for the citations?
The citations are City of Los Angeles citations. They're turned over to Department of Transportation for processing.
And then who collects the money? This is something that Lockheed does again?
Yes, it is.
It is, huh?
Yes, it is.
Mr. President, members, this is just a waste of taxpayers' money once again. It's throwing good money after bad. Number one is that it was designed... Ms. Goldberg, on this particular one, it's throwing good money after bad. This program was designed to provide an excess surplus for the purpose of providing security at Slosson. That was the gimmick they used. The fact of the matter is it's not a surplus, it's a deficit you're running, and that's why you're asking for an addition of $70,000, because there's a deficit. So what you ultimately are doing then is just writing some citations. You're writing some citations. You... Somebody's making a profit, and that's that company again, making a profit, on top of that, and there's no benefit the city's deriving. It was designed to... The benefit was designed to provide security for Slosson, which is still under construction. And even if it were finished, the money is not available because there's no surplus for that purpose. So if we're going to spend money to provide security for that park, then from the general fund, let that $170,000 plus $70,000 go for that purpose. We're not getting our money back. I cannot vote for this. And if Joe's going to be arguing about some other appropriation, this is the one he ought to be arguing about, is the throwing away of taxpayers' money, for sure, for some guy who came up with the idea... You know who I'm talking about, that guy, that Lockheed guy. That's the only one that's going to benefit from this program. How much money was paid to them for collecting the money?
Yeah, to be clear, the extension, or I should say, the pilot program was a not-to...
How much money was paid to them for collecting the money?
Approximately $2.54 per citation.
Per citation. You had over 2,000 citations.
Right.
And we have a... That's a deficit. If we didn't have to pay them that money, it wouldn't be a deficit.
We would have to pay that money whether they issued it.
All right, all right, all right. It's a lousy deal. It's not the first lousy deal you brought before the council, and the council has supported it, but I'm not.
Mr. Hernandez?
Members of the council, I think this conversation should we listen to because why aren't we doing this for McCarthy Park? Why aren't we doing this for Elysian Park?
Can I speak to that? The reason the Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority is involved along the Mulholland Corridor, and the reason I'm before you today, is because the Conservancy and the MRCA built those series of overlooks and are responsible for patrolling them during the daytime hours.
Right, and normally, they're responsible for funding that. I have high crime at McCarthy Park. Why am I not using parking revenue generated there for additional patrol? Why am I not doing that for all our parks?
Well, I can't speak to that because it's a different agency. That's the city.
Right, and so the precedent we're setting here, and the reason I think it's important everybody listen, is we're actually taking... You know, I try to get DOT monies for additional DOT officers at Elysian Park during Dodger games, and I've been told that that's a precedent we don't want to set. And here, we're doing it and giving the money to a separate agency. We have told our parks that they can't have additional money for Rangers, but LAPD has to do that, and we don't give LAPD additional revenue to do that. And so I'm more concerned about the policy that we're establishing here, and I'm asking the question, and if you talk about Santa Monica, you have two parks in my district that you're supposed to be providing security for, that you issue tickets to. You also have a River Center, and you're not asking for it there. And where's the consistency of the policy? Is it because Deerville Canyon is special? More special than Alera Canyon?
No. The reason is, example, at the River Center in Aliria, we have resident rangers who actually reside in those parks, which is actually a very special program that we can provide.
So why don't you do that at Deerville?
We actually have a ranger that resides and actually lives in Aliria Canyon, along with a ranger living inside the River Center. The Mulholland overlooks have no such ranger that resides there, and that's why they need additional security at night. Security, to be clear, that is...
No, but the question right now is, you're asking the City of Los Angeles to pay for the security. That's the bottom line. I don't have a problem with that question. I have a problem with us using DOT parking revenue monies specifically in that area, collected by you, for your department, when we don't control your policies. And we don't allow that to happen at any of our parks. Did you have something you want to respond to that?
Just that council-approved a pilot project a couple of years ago.
Right.
September of '98, to authorize MRCA to patrol along Mulholland seven nights a week. MRCA's cost at that time was identified as $170,000. The Recreation and Parks Department budget had $70,000 in to pay them for the two nights a week that they had been patrolling. The action that's before you is to provide the balance of funding to pay them for the patrols that they've been conducting since last July.
And I have no problem with that question. I have a problem with it being associated with tickets. I mean, that's the precedent we're setting.
Well, in this case, the ticket revenue is being deposited in the general fund. We're asking the council to make an appropriation from the general fund to pay for the contract. It has been tied to the ticket revenue. It doesn't need to be, but the appropriation will pay them for the services that they've been providing.
And that's what I think we want to separate here because that's the policy I'm more concerned about because I'd like to be able to see it happening. I mean, if we're going to do it, I'd like to see it happen in our parks.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
But at the same time, if we separate that, then that's something I'm willing to support.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. The chair recognizes Mr. Fuhr.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think there have been two different policy questions that are both worth pursuing independently. One is the hours, and the other is the policy, not as it relates to the Santa Monica Mountains Recreation team, but rather the more generic question, park-wide. And so my recommendation would be, because there is a very legitimate security issue up in the hillsides, up and down, there have been murders in my district, and that's partly because along this territory, there has been inadequate amount of patrolling, there have been murders in the parks you're talking about, too. So what I was going to recommend is that we... That this moves forward, that there be two specific reports back to Mistress of Wornish's committee, which controls transportation issues. One pertains to... One pertains to the hour restriction, which predates, I think, all of us. I don't know why that was chosen in particular. And the other, the broader question about the potential use when DOT, rather than Santa Monica Mountains people, are involved in enforcing, the broader question is to how we can increase parking enforcement at parks throughout the city using DOT rather than Santa Monica Mountains personnel. So both those reports back, but I do suggest we pursue this. I think it's very important for safety in the hillsides. That made my motion. And I think there's a couple of seconds for that, I suspect.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
I was going to make the motions, and Mr. Fuhr didn't make them, so I second his motion. As long as we get a response on that, that's good.
Okay. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? Okay. Let us open the roll on the item with Mr. Fuhr's amendments. Well, first, is there any objection to Mr. Fuhr's amendments? Okay, then we'll take the amendments as accepted. Let's open the roll on this item as amended by Mr. Fuhr and tabulate the vote. We've got a delay of the game penalty going.
Eleven eyes, one no.
There we go. Eleven eyes, one no.
Fourth with, please.
That item is approved. Fourth with. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 16 called special--
Mr. Holden, do you have a point of order?
Yeah, record me no, please, on that item.
Okay, that doesn't change the outcome.
I know, just a big, big no.
Okay, let's record it as a big, big no for Mr. Holden. Okay. Okay.
Item number 16 called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Councilwoman Goldberg, item number 16 called special by yourself?
Just a question, literally. I had asked last time, and I didn't ever get a response, as to whether or not these regulations of private security services affected any of the contractors that the City of Los Angeles has contracts with for private security.
If I can answer a question, Ms. Goldberg, these are not city contracts. These were the contracts put out like the bid, so the question is, they might be one removed, but there was some conflict between who and how they are governed, whether or not the state regulations govern them, or whether or not the police department could come up with, and there was conflict and redundancy, and we have finally sorted that out.
Okay. When I looked at the file, I couldn't really tell, and I just wanted to get clear.
There were fees being charged by the police department to review things, that fees were already being paid to Sacramento to review things.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Ms. Akowski, did you want to be recognized again?
No.
Okay, is there any other council member that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on item number 16 and tabulate the vote?
Where's the yeses?
Move faster.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes. That item is approved. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, the items left on the regular agenda are closed session items. There is also a special agenda which contains two closed session items. Do you wish to have public comment at this time?
Chair recognizes President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to reconsider item one, which we've already approved, and ask that it be continued for 30 days.
Councilwoman Galanter has asked that item number one be reconsidered. Is there any objection to reconsideration on item number one? Seeing none, the item is again before us.
And now I will move to continue for 30 days, please.
Councilwoman moves to continue 30 days--
That's July 18th.
July 18th. Councilwoman Goldberg seconds. Is there any objection to continuing item number one for 30 days until July 18th? Seeing none, that item will be continued to the time requested by the councilwoman. Next item?
Thank you.
Now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, Cheryl Snell, followed by Candido Mars. Ms. Snell, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm here today to present over 600 signatures to Councilwoman Mitsakowski that have been gathered within the last two-plus weeks. The petition requests that the 36 bicus trees slated for destruction in Brentwood Village be examined on an individual basis at the time of excavation as to the need for their removal. Even though this project was originally discussed many years ago, the residents themselves have been grossly under-informed about the existence of the current project. Those who have most to lose by it have not been consulted, and erroneous information about alternatives have been circulated. There is overwhelming community support for the preservation of the trees. Successful remediation strategies for combining sidewalk safety and the trees with large roots have been implemented in Pacific Palisades, Westwood Village, Enlargement Village. This is not an either-or choice. We believe that it is essential for government to be able to absorb and adopt new information, and we think that this has not happened in the case of the Brentwood Village trees. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you can just give that right to the sergeant. Thank you, ma'am. Candido Mars? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers, I want to take a little, just go back to Wednesday on item 27, which had to deal with the Rampart issue, and just say that at no time was I being disrespectful to any of you council member, and that there's no one that has more respect for this governing body, and that I often tell people that in 1991, '92, I was politically inspired by Mayor Ridden, but that I was raised by this city council. So again, there was no intent of disrespect. Now, let's go on to the more important issue. Tomorrow, on Saturday, the Van Nuys TNI will open up its second opening season of soccer. There are going to be close to 300 to 400 kids that will be involved. And Councilwoman Cindy Miskinkowski and Ms. Ann D'Amato from the mayor's office, I have two pins for you, if I may, if I can have the officer. This is something that has brought a lot of joy and pride to the Van Nuys area. As co-chairman, it's something that the area has really needed, so I want to really thank you. But the one thing that I think that should be noted is that crime rate in Van Nuys had the least rise, it was only 4%. So this program is doing a lot to keep crime down in the city of Los Angeles. So again, thank you, Councilwoman Miskinkowski and Ann D'Amato from the mayor's office. Thank you. I got them right now.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard on public comment? That closes the public comment. We do have an executive session items.
Mr. President, there's a special one that's currently on the desk.
Okay.
It's a motion submitted by Councilmember Holden for Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
All right. Mr. Weingard, where is the city attorney? Special one.
Thank you, Mr. President. In June of 1999, the city council adopted a position on AB 260, which was proposed legislation creating a new governing structure at Exposition Park. That has just, the legislation has been changed substantially, and the hearing is on Tuesday, June 20th, and the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings.
Twelve eyes.
That's, the matter's before us. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. No, not that. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item?
Special one is now before you. Special one is a motion brought in by Councilmember Holden for Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
I thought we voted on, we voted on the--
That was on the findings, and now--
Okay, okay, we have the matter before us. It's, Mr. Holden, would you explain what it is? It's something--
It's that the, best of my recollection, what it really does is takes the City of Los Angeles out of the mix, it relates to Exposition Park, where you have no voice, no vote, and it's still, we have a joint powers agreement right now where we are participating equally.
This is a motion that, a bill that Mr. Wright brought in--
Wright brought in--
To eliminate the city and a county in involvement with a--
It's called preemption, and so there you are. Can you believe that?
Yeah. Okay. All right, we have the matter before--
President, I would like the staff to give a full report. I think this may well be an effort to get the authority to give money for a professional football team by excluding the city from the decision-making process, and I want to know exactly what it is we're voting on, and to bring something like this in special, special, which is supposed to be for emergencies, without knowing what it is, I want the staff to give a full explanation.
Well, on my time, Mr. President, I was still on my time. The fact that it matters is that this bill is going to be heard in committee early next week, number one. Number two, it's been amended substantially, and we have to change our position, Mr. Wax.
I want the staff to give a full explanation.
All right, then let the staff give you an opinion on it, and your vote will be the same as mine, I'm sure.
I think that actually we--
Can the staff give us a full explanation?
Mr. Karsh?
Thank you.
I think we opposed this once before, didn't we? Michael?
Last year, the version of the bill was different, and our position was to support, if amended, to maintain the voting weight of the city in the tripartite arrangement. However, last week, the bill was amended to change that completely, and it eliminates the role of the city in the Coliseum. So what we're faced with is suddenly a hearing on Tuesday, and the city's voice is completely removed from this authority.
So we want to oppose it.
And yes, we're recommending, the recommendation is to oppose outright.
All right. That's exactly what I want to do, is oppose it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Ah, Mr. Wax.
Anyone else want to, if not, prepare the roll on special one.
Wax, you have to trust me.
Tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, can I ask for reconsideration on item 16?
Did we complete special one? Okay, that's approved.
Item 16 is the security, private security services, and the city attorney has just pointed out that the ordinance that's on the file is not related to that case, so we need to continue it till Tuesday to get the correct ordinance on the file. So if I can have the, I am moving reconsideration of item 16 to put over till Tuesday.
Item 15.
Sixty.
Sixteen? If there's no objections, item 16 is reconsidered for the purpose of continuing till Tuesday. If there are no objections, that will be the order. Next item?
Mr. President, now you have the special meeting in front of you and the closed session matters that are on the regular agenda. Do you wish to close the desk before recessing the regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay, council members request to be excused from council. Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused on Tuesday, June 27th, to arrive at 10:30 for city businesses, meets city policy.
There's no objection, unanimous vote.
Councilmember Fuhr requests to be excused on Wednesday, July 5th, for city business, and this meets city policy.
Unanimous vote.
Motion for posting referral.
Excuse me for the next couple of weeks.
A request from Councilmember Ferraro to be excused for June 20th, 21st, 23rd, 27th, 28th, and 29th for city--
Personal business.
For personal business, this meets policy.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. President, it was my understanding that we can have a special motion before us to--
No, we're not having a special motion, Mr. Holden. We had one, you brought it in, but it had no other one. We'll do that Tuesday.
The desk is clear from the regular meeting, and now you have the special meeting.
Okay, we have the special meeting, I mean, well, do we have to call the roll on the special meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, call the roll. We'll suspend the other meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
Bernson, Chick, Fuhr, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Ridley Thomas, Wachs, Walters, Ferraro, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
All right. We're in a special session, they're closed session items. Would everyone, please, not involved with the closed session items, please leave the council chamber. Sergeant, do your duty.
Okay, we're back in open session, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, the item before you is special two. There's a recommendation from the city attorney to authorize expenditure of $775,000 in settlement of case.
Okay, open the roll, close. No, I got you, Joel, it's there. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine eyes, one no.
All right, that is approved. Fourth with on that item. Thank you. We're going to lose a quorum momentarily. What else do we have?
The desk is clear.
Hallelujah. All right, are there any adjourning motions? All right, will the audience please rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Savornich?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Ruth Sarah Young, who passed away on June 13th. Memorial services will be held this afternoon at First Baptist Church of Pomona. She is survived by her son David Young, daughter Caroline Martinez, five grandchildren, and eight great-grandchildren.
Mr. Wax?
I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of Renee Sigristrom. She was a very, very prominent philanthropist, particularly with, in cultural issues, activities, many in Los Angeles, but she's really most renowned for, she and her husband, Henry, almost single-handedly built the Performing Arts Center in Orange County, and they were longtime patrons of the arts, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Did you want to do Don Kalisch? Who? Don Kalisch. I didn't even know. Oh, my God.
It was in the paper yesterday.
Oh, I didn't see it. Do you want to do that one? Oh, go ahead. All right. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Professor Don Kalisch from UCLA, who most of you know better than I do. I actually don't think I've ever met him, but I've certainly heard about him almost from the day I arrived in Los Angeles, who was very active in anti-war activities and one of the real leading lights of our transformation in American attitudes here in Los Angeles. Well, and he wrote extensively about nuclear arms war rates. He wrote about the Vietnam War. He was a man who provided a lot of wisdom and leadership, but he always had a tremendous amount of humor in how he dealt with very dreadful situations. And I'm just stunned, I'm having a little trouble finding the words, because I had no idea that he died. I don't even know how I missed it in yesterday's paper. But he really, probably more than most people who go into the teaching profession, affected the people who were his students. And he even affected people who weren't his students, because he wrote so extensively, and he participated in a public and civic dialogue about issues relating to particularly war and peace and nuclear security. And he will be very, very, very sorely missed by a great, great number of people in this city and country. Call the roll. I'm just blown away. Council is adjourned. Have a nice weekend.